Marisa Bono, Chief Strategic Officer for Via Metropolitan Transit. Hola, buenas tardes. Oprime estrella cero, estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. Thank you for joining our live interactive telephone town hall series. Tonight's topic is focused on the intersection of Via's Keep SA Moving Plan and economic impact and workforce development. This event and others will give us a chance to speak directly with you and answer as many of your questions as possible. For our phone participants, we'd like to invite you to watch the livestream by visiting keep s moving dot com. Scroll down the streaming player toward the bottom of the page. I'm very excited tonight to host this conversation with you and our outstanding panel of experts. With us today are John Hakinios. He is an economist and president of TXP, an economic analysis and policy consulting firm. Welcome, John.
Welcome. Thank you.
We also have Leo Gomez. He's the president and CEO of Brooks. Hello, Leo.
Hello. Good evening, Marisa. Great to join you all.
Great to have you. And we also have Jenna Saucedo Herrera, president and CEO of the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation. Hello, Jenna.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Marisa, thank you for the invitation to participate.
Thank you for joining us. So we're looking forward to a robust conversation tonight, a lively conversation, and we hope that you'll dial star three to enter the queue and ask questions live on this call. As I mentioned, this is an interactive forum. It's a live forum. We'd love to hear from you. We want to hear from you. We'll be taking as many questions as possible live on this event. Oprime estrella cero, estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. If you have a question, you press star three now on your keypad at any time. You'll be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you will be live on the call and you can ask your question directly. If you're streaming the event on our website, just type your name and question below the streaming player. So let's get started. John, I'd like to start with you. You're an economist with a background in public policy and a former board member of CAP Metro, Austin's Metropolitan Transit Agency. Can you tell us a little bit more about your background as an economist and your work in transit specifically?
Sure. So I've been running actually an economic consulting firm based up here in Austin really for about 35 years now. It's a long time. I started it when I was five. I'm kidding. And I, as you alluded to, I am a former board member at the Transit Authority here in Austin, Capital Metro. Have done quite a bit of consulting work for a range of transit authorities, certainly the folks down at Via, obviously, folks here at Capital Metro in Austin, folks up at the Dallas area, Rapid Transit, DART up in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, looking at a range of things that affects transit. We've certainly done a number of different studies, looking at the economic impacts of transit, how transit integrates with economic development, workforce development and all that. And then my firm works on a wide variety of issues above and beyond transit as well. Most of our work is here in Texas at this point, probably two thirds or so, but we've actually worked all across the country over the last 35 years or so.
Well, thank you, John. And as you know, but for the benefit of participants, we want to make sure they know, Via has a strategic plan called Keep SA Moving. This is a plan that's designed to increase frequency across our service network, expand alternative transportation services such as Via Link, our ride-share service, and also invest in technologies that would make public transit more efficient and easier to use in San Antonio. More details about that plan on keep s moving dot com. Now, a funding strategy is currently on the ballot, ATD Prop A. It's at the bottom of the ballot, and that proposition, if passed, would reallocate an existing 1/8 cent sales tax to help fund the plan, starting on January 1st, 2026. So not a tax increase, it's a reallocation of an existing tax. Now, before the Board, the Via Board, took the vote to put ATD Proposition A on the ballot, we at Via wanted to see if investing and expanding public transit for San Antonio would have any significant impacts on the economy. So earlier this year, we contracted with you, John, to conduct an independent study on this issue. Can you tell us a little bit more about your process and your analysis?
Sure. And so anytime we are asked to take a look at this kind of potential public sector investment, I think it's totally appropriate to bring in somebody from outside and go through the analytical process of saying, hey, is this a good investment? Are we going to get a good return on allocating these resources? Is the community going to benefit? And so the process to do that, sort of, I would say, has a couple of key steps. One is looking what's happened elsewhere in other communities and also throughout the literature around all this, so you can identify, for example, what the range of community benefits might be. And so we've been looking at it in a situation down there in San Antonio, in terms of broad community benefits, there's about five broad categories. Certainly, it'll have an impact on basic mobility. It will have, in some circumstances, some impact on traffic congestion, which is related to mobility. I think it's going to have a significant impact on the intersection between both housing and employment, especially for disadvantaged communities, and I think that's a very important conversation right now. Transit tends to have an effect on health and the environment. We'll talk about that, I'm sure, as we go forward. And then finally, broadly, it has a huge impact on public safety. Certainly, we can get people, for example, who have had too much to drink off the road and in some kind of transit, obviously, that has positive effects. So you look at these community benefits, you look at what people have found elsewhere. That's kind of step one. Step two in the equation is here in the short run, this is going to represent a stimulus. We've all been talking a lot about stimulus over the past six months. We've had certainly the CARES Act, there's more stimulus conversations going on right now. That tracks back to a basic idea in economics, when times are tough, the government should spend more money, particularly around infrastructure investments, to help stimulate the economy. And there would be some effects associated with that of this kind of capital spending program that is being contemplated for you folks down in San Antonio. But then the third thing, which is really interesting, is can we dig a little bit deeper? Can we say if we make this kind of investment, if we create these kind of community benefits, will we see the effects over time in the overall economic performance of San Antonio? And the way you do that is to look at other places around the country who are a little more transit intensive than San Antonio is, and look at their economic performance over time, see if there's a relationship there. The answer is, there is one. So three levels: broad community benefits, mostly related to mobility, congestion, health, well-being, public safety, employment and housing, short-term stimulus, investing in infrastructure that puts people to work right away, and then longer-term economic development benefits that will be felt over an extended period of time.
Thank you for that. And it looks like we have about 2,500 of our closest friends participating in the telephone town hall tonight. Thank you for joining us. Just a reminder, this is a live interactive forum, so press star three on your phone keypad now if you want to ask a question. You can get in the queue. A member of our staff will greet you, and then the next time you hear your name, you'll be live on the call. John Hakinios, an economist and the president of TXP, an economic impact and public policy firm, is discussing the economic impact report that he performed for Via, analyzing the economic benefits of Via's Keep SA Moving Plan. His report is available at keep s moving dot com if you want to dig into that data, dig into that report. If you're a policy and a data wonk like I am, you can take a look at that. But John, can you just give us sort of a, what were the very high-level positive impacts, if any, that you found for San Antonio when it comes to investing in expanding mass transit?
Well, I think that it's going to, again, if we think about kind of these three categories of benefit. First one on the community side, it's going to improve mobility, it's going to help with traffic congestion, not all the time, but one of the things we found, for example, looking out in Los Angeles, is it really had a positive impact on traffic congestion at peak rush hour times. Some very interesting work done on that, which is detailed in our study. I think it's going to have a very positive effect on the environment and certainly on health as well. I mean, transit tends to marry up with using alternative forms of, other alternative forms of transportation, such as walking, cycling, et cetera. That all tends to have positive effects, tends to reduce greenhouse gas emissions because you have fewer vehicles actually on the road. The public safety implications are substantial. Again, more people riding transit means fewer people in cars, fewer people in cars means fewer auto fatalities, auto accidents, general things related to that. And then I think right now, a particularly important conversation we are having, not only in San Antonio, but in many communities around the country, is how do we find a way to target economic development around people who have been traditionally disadvantaged? And how do we find ways to get people who need jobs, basic transportation, so they can get to work? And one of the things that's really important about that, and one of the challenges historically has been people need transportation to work and they need it to be relatively time-certain. Part of what we're talking about here is really expanding the time certainty of transit, which makes it more viable for people to access employment around all that. If you can access employment, you now have more money. If you have more money, you can better afford decent housing, all these positive benefits associated with enabling economic development in our most disadvantaged communities. So that's one level of benefit. Second level of benefit, again, that we mentioned before, is the stimulus effect. You're talking about injecting a little over half a million, half a billion dollars, excuse me, I get the Bs and the Ms wrong, half a billion dollars into the local economy. That's going to have some ripple effects, it's going to create some jobs in the short run. That's positive, that's very consistent with what we're talking about at the federal level right now. And then, beyond that, what we found is that over time, communities that rely more on transit, less on strictly auto transportation to get people around the community, tend to be more compact and tend to perform better economically. And the measure we use on that is per capita income, which I think is one of the more solid measures of prosperity in the economy. And what we found is, to the extent that you can improve the level of transit service over time, the economy tends to grow, as measured by that variable. So that all sounds like nerd stuff, but at the end of the day, what it means is, it's a very, very sound investment that creates a range of benefits for folks in San Antonio. Makes a lot of sense to me, especially right now when you're not talking about raising taxes to do it.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. That was John Hakinios. He's an economist and the president of TXP. You can take a look and read his economic impact study for Via's Keep SA Moving Plan. Just go to keep s moving dot com. And you can also read more about the plan itself. Again, keep s moving dot com. Looks like we have about 2,700 participants with us tonight. Thank you for joining us tonight. Just a reminder, this is a live interactive forum. Press star three to get in the queue to ask your question live. You'll meet with a member of our staff, and then the next time you hear your name, you will be live. I'd like to kick it over to you now, Jenna. We have Jenna Saucedo Herrera with us. She is the CEO of the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation, SAEDF. As San Antonio's MVP when it comes to working every single day to bolster our economy, Jenna, you've been at the head of the table with executives from around the globe who are considering moving their businesses, their corporations to San Antonio. SAEDF is responsible for advancing the growth of the San Antonio regional economy through domestic and international business development partnerships and market strategies. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jenna, but I believe EDF has secured over 15,000 jobs for our community from projects that have included some heavy hitter businesses. So thank you for the work that you do for our community every day. So tell me, Jenna, what challenges in your role, what challenges do you see for workforce and economic development in the context of a pandemic, in the context of COVID-19?
First of all, it's a great question. And John, I have to say that I've read your report. It is not nerdy, it is great information. But at the end of the day, you know, what we're talking about here, investing in transit, is about creating jobs. That's why the EDF exists. We work to recruit corporations into the San Antonio region. We also want to keep our San Antonio businesses as competitive as possible here within the market. And so to do that, we need to make sure that we can get these businesses access to talent. So when CEOs across the country are making decisions about where they want to invest in an operation, in a facility where they will employ, you know, hundreds of thousands of folks, they are chasing talent. They want to know where people want to live. They want to know how their employees are going to get to work. And that's what they're making their decisions based off of, right? It's talent first and foremost. And so San Antonio needs to be that community that is attractive to talent. And there are national statistics, we worked with a firm last year, and we cited about 40% of millennials across the country prioritize convenient ground transportation when they were making decisions on where they wanted to live. So first and foremost, San Antonio needs to be investing in ground transportation because we know that young people, talented people, want it, right? They're interested in that when they're making decisions. And then, of course, CEOs are following that talent as needed. I mean, there are large companies that we've worked with, of course, the Amazon headquarters, RFP, played out publicly, and there was actually a section in that RFP that talked about ground transportation, transit connectivity. But companies that we have worked with, that have selected San Antonio, Hulu, Navistar, Toyota, there have been several that have prioritized increased frequency and connectivity for transit as well. So it's extremely important. You referenced the pandemic we're in, and going back to something that John previously mentioned, right? We know that even prior to the pandemic, that economic mobility and bringing San Antonians along so that they can climb the economic ladder of life requires access to jobs, and access to a job means being able to commute and get to a job, connectivity to a job. So again, ground transit is extremely important for economic development in general, and I'm glad we're having this conversation tonight about it.
Thank you. That was Jenna Saucedo Herrera, CEO of the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation. And Jenna, we have an online question for you coming from Melanie. Melanie, listen to your response, and she wants to know what types of corporate HQ, what types of corporate HQ and corresponding jobs has San Antonio lost out on due to public transportation demands by those companies?
So unfortunately, there are probably several that aren't even on my radar, right? That I wouldn't be able to count. But let's use Amazon as an example, right? We couldn't, as a community, meet the minimum criteria that they had outlined within that RFP. And as I previously mentioned, transit was a component of that RFP, was one of the items that was basically a minimum criteria to respond. But I can guarantee you that there have probably been several others that we've missed out on because a lack of connectivity. And again, it's all about moving people and access to talent. I back that up even further and say that, you know, when headquarters or CEOs are making decisions about headquarter investment, again, it's all about access to talent. And when you think about that type of decision, you're thinking about, again, where does young talent want to live? Where do they want to be? Again, San Antonio needs to be that place. And so I think the conversations we're having about ability to connect, ability to, you know, walk around within the urban core, all of that plays into quality of place for talent and CEOs as they're making decisions on where to locate.
Thank you. That was Jenna Saucedo Herrera, CEO of the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation. Tonight, we also have Leo Gomez with us. He is the president and CEO of Brooks. Before we go over to Leo, just want to remind everyone, we have about almost 2,800 participants with us tonight. Just want to remind you, this is a live interactive session. If you have a question, press star three now, and you will get in the queue to ask your question live. Okay, Leo, you, as I said, you're the president and chief executive officer of Brooks, or as our CEO at Via likes to call you, the king of Brooks. Can you tell our listeners today what Brooks is? And what is the impact that Brooks has on our city, especially on the south side?
Well, briefly, Brooks is the agency responsible for redeveloping the former air force base in southeast San Antonio, Brooks Air Force Base. It was a military base for almost 100 years, and Brooks has been responsible over the next, last 20 years, really the last 10 years, in redeveloping the property in a way that not only creates economic prosperity on the campus itself, but really regional prosperity for the families that surround the Brooks campus. So that's what we're all about. And at the end of the day, how does that, how does transportation help us do that job? Well, Jenna, you were referring in the previous, one of the previous questions, about how important is it to prospective employers looking at San Antonio? We have actually worked together with Jenna and her team at EDF on a couple of prospects that practically sealed the deal when we drove them up to the transit center that Via invested in, right smack in the middle of Brooks. Why is that important to them? Because that gives them the confidence that the community's making an investment to connect people in the surrounding neighborhoods with the jobs that they're going to create. And I need to say, these prospects that come to town, they tend to be from the east coast, from the west coast, and internationally, from areas where their communities have made significant investments in public transit, and that public transit is very reliable in delivering the workforce to their plants. So that's critical that we do that. And as we employ a couple of more thousand people at Brooks, we want to make sure that the people who really need the jobs in the surrounding region have access to those jobs. And let me say finally that, for those of us that don't realize it, Brooks may be doing itself the 1,300 acres that are being redeveloped, but we're surrounded by a region that had a poverty level of over 20% prior to COVID. These families need jobs, good-paying jobs, and they need public transit to connect them to those jobs.
So it's not just about attracting companies from other parts of the country, other parts of the world, to San Antonio. It's about ensuring that San Antonio residents have access to local jobs. Fair?
Yes, throughout the region, you know, whether it's a economic development mode, node, I'm sorry, is the right term, right, John?
Yes.
Economic nodes like Brooks or Port San Antonio, another parts of San Antonio. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. John is my favorite nerd in the world. The wonderful thing about him is that he's a nerd that can explain things in ways that I understand. But yes, connecting people.
You're favorite, you're hurting my feelings.
Our nodes for economic development is critically important.
It is.
Very good. Thank you for that. You know, you mentioned the transit center at Brooks.
See how simply you explained that? It is.
Very good. I know, I'm impressed. You put, you mentioned the transit center at Brooks, Leo. You pushed and advocated so hard for that transit center, you were a real champion on getting that transit center to Brooks. One of the key elements of the Keep SA Moving Plan are three innovation zones. Those zones are currently proposed at the South Texas Medical Center, Port San Antonio, and Brooks. These are areas where Via would explore third-party partnerships to address first and last mile connections, connectivity options in the proposed zones to complement the traditional bus service. This is also a concept that you've been advocating for, for a long time, for your community. How do you see it benefiting Brooks and the south side of the city?
Well, it would benefit Brooks, but it would really benefit the workers who get jobs at Brooks. If they're taking public transit and they arrive at the transit center at Brooks, they find themselves right smack literally in the middle of Brooks. But even then, they can be over half a mile from their actual plant where they're going to go to work, or the office building where they're going to work. And so we have got to figure out how to invest in the appropriate forms of transportation, literally from the transit center to the workplace, rather than having people walking from the transit center for more than half a mile to get to their workplace. So we've got to get innovative in doing that and use technology to do it, use other forms of transportation. We can't have a bus literally taking people from their neighborhoods to the front store, to the front door of every plant at Brooks. That's what the transit center is for. And as an innovation zone, we look forward to working with Via and others that would invest in it on how we deal with that challenge of getting folks from the transit center to their actual place of work.
Thank you. It looks like we have almost 3,000 participants with us tonight. If you just joined, this is a live interactive forum. You can press star three to get in the queue to ask your question. And that was Leo Gomez. He's the president and CEO of Brooks, and he was talking about an element of the Keep SA Moving Plan, that's Via's strategic plan. The funding strategy for Keep SA Moving is currently on the ballot. It's ATD Proposition A at the bottom of the ballot. And I'd like to go ahead and go to our live callers. Velia, go ahead, you're live.
My name is Velia Thomas, and I'd like to know if the people with disabilities are going to benefit from this project, because there's not enough, there's only two people can ride the bus, and if there's more people waiting for the bus, then you have to wait for the next bus, especially if you work, that doesn't work very good for us. And also, if they're going to put ramps so we can get on the sidewalk, because I have trouble, if I go to Walmart on 410 in Military, I have no problem getting there from Military in 1604, but coming back home, I have to go, go all the way to Calak Park and ride, come back, and then we turn, I think it's on the right to, it's behind Walmarts. And if I, if I have to get, it gets dark early in the wintertime, so I can't go all the way down to Calak and come back. So I have to go on the excess road and go all the, down the, what is it, right there behind Lowe's? I think it's.
Thank you. Thank you for your question, Velia. Now, the city has control over sidewalk improvements, but Via does collaborate with the city on access to our bus stops for our disabled riders. And so I'll get that customer service number for you in just a second, so you can call to report the bus stop where you're having those access issues. But the broader question that you asked is an important one. You asked whether or not the Keep SA Moving Plan is designed to benefit riders with disabilities, and the answer is yes. The plan itself is designed to expand our service area by about 30%. It's also designed to increase the frequency in our system and decrease wait times. But when you drill down on the populations that will really benefit by the plan as its design, disabled riders will see an increase of 44%, 44% more disabled riders will have access to frequent service. I also like to talk about the elements in the plan that are designed to increase mobility on-demand options. Mobility on-demand is an alternative bus service. It's different than our traditional bus service. We piloted a mobility on-demand system in 2019. It's a 17-square-mile zone on the northeast part of San Antonio, and it's essentially a ride-share service where you can summon a vehicle on an app or on the telephone or a website. It functions kind of like Uber or Lyft in the sense that it's on-demand, but the fares are based on our bus prices. So you can get the service of ride-share for the cost of a bus ride. And so that's a more financially efficient option for folks who are disabled and might have fixed income situations. But it's also, because the vehicles are fully accessibility ADA compliant, it's also a good travel option for those who have a hard time getting to our bus stops. The Keep SA Moving Plan would expand our mobility on-demand service from 17 square miles to 300 square miles around the city and not just on the northeast part of town. So again, you can get more plans on, more details about the plan at keep s moving dot com. And Velia, again, call 210-362-2020 to report that intersection where you're having accessibility issues.
Marisa, may I chime in?
Yes, please, absolutely.
I would say to Delia, you know, for the disability community, really, Marisa said a word in her answer that I think is key, not just for the disability services, but all of Via's existing services, and that's the word frequency. The more we can improve the frequency of the lines so that our disabled community is not waiting, or our entire community is not waiting as long as they need to, but also the frequency and availability of. but also the frequency and availability of VIA trans with additional investment, that's what it's going to do. VIA has the services today. It doesn't have enough investment to actually improve the frequency and the availability of those services like we need in San Antonio.
Thank you, thank you, Leo. And it looks like we have about 3,000 participants on the line with us tonight. If you'd like to ask your question, press star three to get in the queue. Okay, everyone, we want to hear from you. Thanks for joining us tonight. We're going to ask a quick poll question. If you're on the phone, you can vote by pressing the corresponding number on your keypad. If you're online, you can vote by selecting your response below the streaming player. And the poll question is, do you agree or disagree with the following statement? If we do not make investments to improve our transit system now, then it will cost us millions of dollars more to find solutions to gridlock in the future? Press one if you agree, two if you disagree, and three if you're not sure. Again, the statement is, if we do not make investments to improve our transit system now, then it will cost us millions of dollars more to find solutions to gridlock in the future? Press one if you agree, two if you disagree, press three if you're unsure. And while we tally up those results, we actually have an economist with us on the line. He's one of our panelists today, John Hockinios, who I'm sure gets those types of cost-benefit questions all the time. What does research say about that statement? The statement was, if we do not make investments to improve transit now, it's going to cost us millions of dollars down the line to find solutions of gridlock. Any thoughts on that based on your reading and analysis of the research out there?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we've seen that happen over and over again, is that people who choose to defer investment, and that's really what it would be, regret it because, guess what? Stuff doesn't get cheaper. It gets more expensive. And beyond that, not only does it get more expensive, but our communities begin to change. I mean, one of the challenges that we're facing in San Antonio is you have a community that has historically been predicated on the automobile, which means it tends to sprawl, tends to get bigger, tends to spread out, fine. But over time, as we don't make investments, if we don't make investments in transit capacity, the land use patterns in San Antonio will continue to sprawl as opposed to potentially being a little more compact because of the investment in transit. And that's going to create costs above and beyond the sort of narrow, here's what it will cost us to retrofit on into the future as opposed to making the investments now. So I've seen this many, many times over the last, for, for three decades or so. Been involved in this. Most of the time when communities don't make the investment, they regret it when they go forward from there.
We, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. It's a time when people are really tightening their belts, realigning their financial priorities. But at the same time, we have studies, one, for example, from the Alamo Area MPO that have conducted projections. And the projections say that we will have over a million new citizens, a million new residents in San Antonio by 2040. So the question is, how do we recalibrate and design a transit system that meets the needs of our community during a pandemic and during the recovery post-pandemic? But also, how will we address future growth?
Well, that's of course one of the things, I'm sorry, let me, let me just jump in and I'll be, I'll be concise, I promise. Um, that's the thing about infrastructure investments. You don't make them for today, and you don't make them for tomorrow, and you don't make them for next year. You make them for the next generation. And you really make them for the future of your community because over time, your decisions about infrastructure, including transit, will shape what the community looks like and, in my view, the overall prosperity of the community. So in some ways, and we've seen this also historically, the very best time to be talking about this kind of thing is as we are looking to emerge out of a pandemic because logically, things might not be quite as expensive over the next couple of years as they would have been prior to the pandemic. And that gives you an opportunity to more efficiently invest in these kinds of things, being prepared for what's coming down the road five, 10, 15, 20 years from on into the future, when San Antonio is going to easily be at least a million people more than it is now.
Makes, makes a lot of sense. And I have a question here that's pertinent. I have a question here from David Quick, who asked his question on Facebook Live, and he's saying, "As I travel across North America, I have seen many mass transit, mostly light rail systems that look great. However, they don't get approval based on the cost-benefit analysis. The prospective benefits of expanding mass transit almost always paints a very clear picture that it is good on so many levels and from many aspects. What are the forces that exist that prevent these types of transit systems from delivering as promised? And secondly, how do we overcome them?" Jenna, you know, you have your finger on the pulse of a lot of what's going on here in San Antonio. Do you have any thoughts on David's question?
I do, I do. And you might have to grade my paper here. But I was actually thinking, as John was talking about investment, and that's exactly what we're discussing today. This isn't a cost, this is an investment. And oh, by the way, it's not a new tax. It's within existing taxing mechanisms, right? This investment is for the long term. And the reality is that, friend of VIA here, but the reality is that we have under-invested for decades in VIA here in San Antonio. So when we are looking at competitive communities across the country, again, as we do our work to potentially recruit corporations to San Antonio, it's fascinating to see how much they have invested for the past several years in their transit systems. In fact, you don't even have to look outside of the state. Marisa, I'm sure you can walk us through comparisons to Dallas and Austin and Houston and what they have invested in their transit systems over the years. And so when you ask the question, you know, what are the forces? To be honest, our system today is a reflection of how we have under-invested for years. That has been the biggest challenge. I think in general, elected leaders, I think business leaders know we need to prioritize it. We just haven't. And so I'm glad we're having the conversations that we're having today. And, and I'll be honest, I think what's driving that is the need to focus on economic mobility and the access for San Antonians to get to their jobs, right? And of course, the pandemic has exacerbated a lot of these challenges for us, but I'm glad we're having the conversations. And to be perfectly honest, we should have been having them decades ago.
Marisa, can I take something?
Sure, absolutely.
The biggest challenge is, what I would say is kind of the natural temptation to say, well, I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna take transit, so why should I pay for it, right? If it doesn't affect me directly, then I don't see why we should spend money on it. That's a human tendency, but it's short-sighted. Because all the things we're talking about are things that make the community stronger. If the community's stronger, everybody benefits. If a person who didn't have access to basic mobility to get to a job is now availing themselves of city services, as a taxpayer, you're paying for that. But now, if we make the investment in transit and this person's able to successfully turn themselves from a consumer of city services into somebody who's paying taxes, successfully employed, and is now not costing the city or the community money, but is actually making contribution, everybody wins. But it takes that capacity to see it in that broader context and not just take the narrow view, hey, if I'm not going to use it, why should we pay for it?
Makes a lot of sense. What I'm hearing is what our VIA board chair, Hope Andrade, frequently says, which is, you can't have economic mobility without actual mobility. So we have over 3,000 participants on, participating with us live on the call tonight. Thank you for joining us. Just a reminder, this is a live, interactive event. We want to take as many of your questions as possible. Press star three to get in the queue now. And we had a poll question earlier. I'm going to announce the results of that poll now. And the question was whether or not you agree with the following statement. And the statement was, do you agree or disagree that if we do not make investments to improve our transit system now, then it will cost us millions of dollars more to find solutions to gridlock in the future? Again, the statement is, if we don't make investments now to improve transit, it will cost us millions of dollars more to find solutions to gridlock in the future? 80% of our participants tonight said they agree with that statement. 5% said they disagree, and 15% said that they're unsure. I'd like to go now to a question from one of our live callers. Michael, go ahead. You're live.
Yesterday, I had the great joy of casting a ballot here in San Antonio. One of my first is a new resident in support of Prop 8. And I want to give props to both Jenna and to Leo. The design of nodes for development, economic development, is just a brilliant idea. An idea, Leo, and this is kind of a crazy one. Consider the use of autonomous vehicles within those campuses. They're a smaller area. They're, they're usually lower-density roads and might be a good opportunity to use autonomous vehicles in the future. Having seen what Austin had done putting down rails in support of areas like Dell and IBM, and to have those plants close or reduce their employment, then all of a sudden, you have rails in places where you don't need people to move. And I think autonomous vehicles might be part of the solution. What are your thoughts?
Michael, it's not such a crazy idea. Actually, it's a very real opportunity that I hope we get to explore. With Brooks as an innovation zone, as Marisa said earlier, we might get the opportunity to pilot an autonomous vehicle program to do just that, to shuttle people from throughout. Now, technology is fast approaching, but it's not quite there yet to do it with confidence. So we still need to explore what we do between now and at the point when autonomous vehicles are a proven technology that can truly serve the community. But I think you're right on, Michael, and I look forward to partnering with VIA and others in testing that technology and piloting that Brooks so that if it indeed works, we find ways to leverage it in economic development nodes throughout San Antonio.
Marisa, can I?
I saw Leo's eyes light up. Absolutely. I just, I saw Leo's eyes light up when he heard that question. And I think a lot of local leaders like Leo see the potential of adapting an expanded transit system to future technology. But go ahead, John. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, I, I was fortunate enough to spend a couple of years working with Texas Transportation Institute over at Texas A&amp;M and College Station, specifically on looking on, on how do we commercialize and implement autonomous vehicle technology in Texas? And the general consensus is, is that fixed ride-away transit will be one of the very first areas where you will see fairly widespread implementation of autonomous vehicle technology in Texas. And it will be one of the first areas where, you know, sort of average folks get a chance to actually experience it. And it goes back in part to what Leo was talking about earlier, which is the last mile problem, that you come to the transit center at Brooks and you're still, you know, half a mile away from your office building and it's 97 degrees, and who wants to walk through that? Well, you'll begin to see autonomous vehicle technology specifically, and technology in general, helping us solve that last mile problem and also helping us make the transit experience that much more integrated into how we live our lives these days. And so I think it's an incredibly exciting opportunity. And I think transit authorities such as VIA can be right on the forefront of making that available to everyday folks as they're going about their daily lives.
But you know, one of the things like that experts like you, John, have told us and that we know from our work is that it's going to be difficult to adapt to future technology if we don't start investing in, in infrastructure today. And one of the elements of the Keep SA Moving Plan, if VIA does receive a new sustainable funding source, is to start applying for federal dollars that we don't currently qualify for because we don't have a sustainable funding source. We'd like to start laying the foundation for advanced rapid transit, what you just referenced, a system of dedicated corridors that could be adapted later on as these new types of technologies evolve. But currently, without a new sustainable funding source, it's, it's impossible for us to do that. And we're leaving, frankly, millions of dollars in federal funding on the table because we don't have a sustainable funding source. While cities just down the way, Austin, Houston, and Dallas, they are able to access those funds because they've been investing in transit for decades. And Jenna mentioned that earlier. She mentioned the comparison between San Antonio and other major Texas transit agencies. I, I just want to make it clear, VIA has, since the late 70s, received less sales tax revenue than other large metropolitan transit authorities in Texas. Our peer agencies, Capital Metro in Austin, DART in Dallas, Metro in Houston, they all receive a full one cent of sales tax. The Texas Legislature designated one cent of sales tax specifically to fund public transportation. That's why we don't receive state funding. While those communities opted to dedicate the full one cent, San Antonio at the time opted only to dedicate a half cent. And that has translated into hundreds of millions of dollars, not billions of dollars, over the decades in less funding than our peer agencies, than our competitor cities. So for example, Cap Metro in Austin, which, by the way, only covers half the service area size that VIA covers, in 2018, 2018, Cap Metro received $247 million in sales tax revenue based on their one-cent sales tax collected. That is in comparison to substantially less than what VIA collects. Jenna, any follow-up thoughts on what, what type of impact that discrepancy has on competitiveness for San Antonio compared to other Texas cities when it comes to either attracting new companies or enticing San Antonio companies to stay?
Yeah, I think it directly impacts our ability, again, to recruit corporate headquarters and, and keep them here. But the same can be said for our talent. We want San Antonians to have the ability to access their employers, but also to, you know, access restaurants and, you know, commute from Brooks to downtown, et cetera. We surveyed thousands of San Antonians last year, and 60% of them said that it wasn't convenient to commute around in San Antonio without a vehicle, right? That's a big challenge. You know, economic development, workforce development, both extremely broad terms. What it boils down to is jobs, right? Right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Unemployment claims are at an all-time high. We know there's a big challenge. So we're prioritizing jobs, but we know to secure quality jobs within the San Antonio region, that we've got to invest in our people and we've got to invest in our place. And what we're talking about today is, in my opinion, both people and place, right? If we invest in these different regional innovation centers that both Marisa and Leo previously mentioned, we're going to allow our talented San Antonians access to more jobs and access to a greater quality of life. And at the end of the day, broader economic mobility, which is our end goal here.
Thank you. And again, we have almost 3,100 participants with us tonight. Thank you for joining us. I know we're getting close to the end of our time tonight. I'd like to try to squeeze in one last poll question just because it's relevant to where our conversation has taken us. And the question is, while other cities such as Dallas, Austin, and Houston have a full one cent in local sales tax dedicated to public transit, San Antonio's public transportation system is the only large metro authority in Texas to operate on a one-half cent sales tax? The question is, do you believe that redirecting that existing 1/8 cent sales tax will help San Antonio better fund local transportation efforts? Press one for yes, two for no, and three for unsure. A frequent question that we get is, why is VIA, why did the VIA board ask for this money in perpetuity? Why don't they have to cap their reallocation by years? So that, that reallocated sales tax would be reallocated from the OQF, which has already been funded by a council-approved plan for the next 10 years? But the OQF program, when it was being funded by this 1/8 cent, had to come back to voters every five years to reauthorize the expense. But the VIA board is requesting that once this 1/8 cent gets reallocated to VIA, that it be done so in perpetuity. The reason is that, again, the state legislature designated this one cent of sales tax for use to fund public transportation. And so if there is a non-transportation-related program that is being funded with that part of that one cent, it needs to be capped in time. But because transportation was the intended purpose, is designated by the legislature by law, we can request that funding in perpetuity. So that explains the discrepancy. So that explains the discrepancy. But John, I wonder if you could offer your thoughts on why a transit agency would need a sustainable funding source over time when it comes to properly planning infrastructure?
I'll give you, I'll give you a real-world example. 10 years ago, if I said the words autonomous vehicle, you'd say, what's that? We have no idea, right? We don't know what's coming down the road 10 years from now or down the transit system, if you will. And so one of the things that's really important when you are making infrastructure investments and you are planning is, if you have to continuously go back and ask for continued permission, it's inevitably going to make your planning process more challenging and more inefficient, especially for these kinds of big capital-intensive efforts that investments in infrastructure really represent. And so you said it, this money is designated by the legislature for transportation. Transportation needs, transportation facilities, transportation parameters, all change over time as technology evolves, as communities evolve, as the nature of work changes. And so what I think the transit authority needs, what VIA needs, is the capacity to say, hey, we know we're going to have this in place, so that as we look to the future and think about making investments, we're not concerned about necessarily having that capacity being taken away from us.
Thank you for that. And we actually have, well, first, let me report on our poll results. We asked a question, do you believe that redirecting an existing one-eighth cent sales tax will help San Antonio better fund local transportation efforts? 71% of our participants tonight said yes, 11% said no, and 18% said unsure. And we have a question online from Dominic, and Dominic is asking, so is the one-eighth cent tax, sales tax, realistic for meeting current needs? And I will tell you, the answer is no. It is going to take a lot to get caught up to the, what has essentially been a chronic underfunding over a period of decades, but that new sustainable funding source will go a long way in pulling down those millions of dollars in federal funds that we currently have to leave on the table because we don't have that, that funding source. I also have a question here online from Kosima. She wants to know where she can find the Economic Impact Report that was conducted and written by John Hakineos, the economist who is with us tonight on the Keep SA Moving webpage. It's, Kosima, it should be available on the resource tab of the keepsamoving.com webpage. If it's not there for whatever reason, it will definitely be on there by tomorrow, first thing in the morning, but it should be on the resources tab of the keepsamoving.com website.
Can I just say that, oh, sorry, Marisa, nothing super relevant. I just wanted to say, that was a beautiful name, Kosima, I've never heard that name, but I love it.
I agree. If it's a Kosima I'm thinking of, she's a very active neighborhood advocate, neighborhood advocate here in our city who's very civically engaged. Okay, so we're getting close to the end of our session tonight, and just wanted to repeat the Economic Impact Study that we were discussing with John Hakineos tonight is available on the keepsamoving.com website. It is on the resource page on our website. And before we conclude tonight, I would like to give each of our panelists tonight just some final thoughts based on the conversation we've had. Had a great conversation tonight, so thank you for that. And I'm going to give you 30 seconds each, and I've got to hold you to it. So Jenna, would you like to start? 30 seconds for your final thoughts.
Sure. Well, first of all, let me say, thank you to VIA for hosting this session, and thank you for over 3,000 San Antonians who tuned in that are interested in this topic tonight. So I'm going to go back to something that John previously mentioned about investing in our future here in San Antonio, because that's exactly what we're talking about here. You know, we are making decisions today for our children and our families, generations to come, right? 10, 15 years out. And I'm hopeful that we continue to prioritize the conversation around investing in VIA, investing in transit, because as we have discussed this entire evening, it's not just about who's riding VIA today and scaling up the services, it's about transforming the way that VIA operates today so that additional San Antonians, new San Antonians in the future can take advantage of the services and that going forward, our economy will be competitive, not just in comparison to where we've been in the past, but competitive globally. And that's obviously a benefit to all San Antonians. So again, thank you to VIA and thank you to everybody for tuning in. I appreciate your interest in the future of our economy.
Thank you, Jenna. Leo, President and CEO of Brooks, 30 seconds for your closing thoughts.
30 seconds, all right, Marisa. I want to, I want to reiterate what we hear from VIA Chair Hope Andrade repeatedly. You can't have economic mobility without literal transit mobility. People who need jobs need to be able to get to their jobs, and that's what we're talking about here today. It's not just about transit, it's about job growth, job opportunity, income opportunity to help families live the kinds of lives that they and every one of us would like to live.
Thank you. John Hakineos, economist and principal at TXP with an Economic Impact Study Report for VIA's plan, available at keepsamoving.com. John, 30 seconds for your final thoughts.
I don't know if that's possible. I mean, economist, 30 seconds? Come on. All right. Economic development is not about one thing, it's about a basket of things, it's about a portfolio of things. You need strong workforce development, which means good schools, means job training, you need clusters of existing industries, you sometimes need natural resources, you need the capacity to attract migrants from other areas who are going to bring skills to the community, and you need the capacity for people to move comfortably around, you need the infrastructure around transportation, and you also, per what Leo said, need the capacity to lift people up and help them achieve their economic potential. So when you think about economic development, think about this as an investment in the same way that you think about investing in people. We invest in schools, we invest in workforce training, all of this designed to create capacity to help our economy grow and flourish. Transit is the same kind of an investment to make. If you put it all together, sum can be greater than parts, and San Antonio can be more successful going forward than it has been in the past.
Thank you, John. And the results from our final poll question, the question was, do you believe that redirecting an existing one-eighth cent sales tax will help San Antonio better fund local transportation efforts? 70% of our participants said yes, 11% said no, 20% said they're unsure. If you'd like to learn more about the plan, again, you can visit keepsamoving.com. Unfortunately, we've come to the end of our live event this evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to speak directly with you and answer your questions. If we didn't get to your question this evening, you can leave a voicemail after the event, just stay on the call when we end, and you'll be transferred into our private voicemail system. You can also send an email at keepsamoving@viainfo.net or call our office at 210-517-4715. We'll be hosting another one of these events, same time, same place, next Wednesday, 7:00 PM. So go to keepsamoving.com to register if you're interested or to find out more about our community events. Thank you again, and have a great evening.